Okay, can you please repeat that?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna start this. I'm gonna start the zoning board of appeals, uh, meeting of August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, for the town of Watertown. I'm gonna have the, uh, secretary call the roll. You have to roll Ned.
Rick Serandria.
Here.
Bill Roger. Ned Dalton, here. Vinnie Giannetto.
Here.
Roger Mitchell. Gary Swingle.
Here.
Jeff Franson.
Here.
Marie Genovese.
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna sit, uh, Gary for Phil and Jeff for Roger. So Gary, so Gary Swingle will be sitting in for Phil Rogers and Jeff Franson will be sitting in for, uh, Roger Mitchell. Okay, let's start. And before we get into the applications, I'm gonna read the zoning board of appeals ground rules. The applicant or his representative will make his formal presentation to the board stating his specific hardship and precisely why this merits a variance from the zoning regulations in the town of Watertown. All comments, discussions, and observations shall be made through the chair after proper recognition by the chairman. This is necessary to ensure that only one person at a time speaks on any issue, thus making it easier for everyone to understand and for clearer legal transcriptions. All persons addressing the commission shall begin by first clearly stating their name and address for the record. If necessary, the person may be asked to spell his or her name for the record. Following the presentation of the application, the zoning board of appeals will ask specific questions of the applicant. After the board has asked its questions of the applicant, I shall then allow members of the public who wish to speak either in favor of this application or against it to address the board. I shall then allow the applicant to respond to the comments of the members of the general public. I shall then allow any members of the general public who wish to present any additional information or clear and fine discussion to do so. I shall then provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond to these additional remarks if he or his representative so wishes. The zoning board of appeals has thirty-five days from the date the public hearing commences to complete the public hearing. The board may ask the applicant for a thirty-five day extension of the public hearing period if the board requires an additional, any additional information or wishes to schedule a sidewalk to observe the situation for themselves. The zoning board of appeals has sixty-five days from the date when the public hearing is closed to render its decision. The board may or may not at its decision, make its decision tonight at the regular, at the regular meeting following the public hearing. You may stay for the regular meeting if you wish, or you may leave at the end of the public hearing and contact the zoning office the following morning to determine the status of your application. Okay.
Go over there.
Application. Let me get this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You also have the ground rule for virtual meeting, please read that.
What?
You also have another ground rule for virtual meeting.
Alright, you're gonna have to hang on a minute.
If you don't have it, Mr. Dalton has it, the secretary can read it.
I could read it.
You have it, go ahead Ned.
Yep.
You read it.
This is a web-based virtual meeting, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being recorded, both video and audio. Mark Masal, the land use administrator, and Michael Simmons, the town's IT director, will be the meeting administrators. A link to the video audio will be posted to the town's website. Most people attending this meeting will be muted, the commissioners and staff will not be muted, however, in order to minimize disruptive audio feedback, all participants should keep themselves on mute until ready to speak. Individuals will be unmuted at the time they are recognized to ask a question or make a presentation. Presentations may be made by applicants and their agents when appropriate and permitted by commission. Other attendees will be permitted to speak only during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners and staff will generally be keeping audio, video of themselves on through, on throughout the meeting unless they are attending via telephone. Applicants and members of the public should feel free to leave their video on or off. However, they will be asked to turn on their video when speaking. A picture tells a thousand words and can be useful in conveying your meaning. If video is not available for you, you will not be precluded from speaking or provided public testimony. During public hearings, individuals desiring to speak will be asked to state their name and give their home address. We will read the public hearing rules at the start of the first public hearing of the meeting. Please use the chat feature or the raise your hand feature for the meeting administrators to know that you've raised your hand to speak. If an applicant or agent needs to submit additional documents to the commission, which is not distributed in advance of the meeting with the rest of the materials, the application will be continued to the next meeting so that the new documents can be made available to the public. Members of the public may only speak during a public hearing. If a member of the public speaks outside of the public hearing or creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the meeting administrators or the chair.
Chat?
Good.
What's that?
Yes.
Okay, I got a question to ask everyone from the board. Um, did you get a page one? I only have a page two to start out with old business.
We have a page one.
I didn't, evidently, I didn't get a page one.
Sorry about that. On page one, you have continued of the public hearing.
Page one, you're missing page two also, Rick.
No, I got, I got page two, it says old business review of zoning board of appeals bylaws, and then the second thing is application twenty-twenty-eight of Pilacy and Ryan.
That's actually page three.
There's page two up in the corner here.
It says that, but it's actually page three.
Gee, see, this is why, I mean, we're gonna talk about it later, these things should be mailed to us so that we have things correctly.
There's two pages.
Page three, page three has, uh, application twenty-twenty-one Franklin Pilacy for location approval for, uh, Blazy dealership.
Right, but that's the fourth page in our packet.
If you look in the upper left corner, on the second page, it says page two, and in the upper left corner, the third page says page two as well.
I don't have any on mine, I printed these, I don't have it.
That is a title, it should be page three.
Okay.
I don't have it, kids. So where are we gonna start this meeting at? I mean, I.
Says continuation of public hearing.
Continuation of public hearing, item one, application number twenty-twenty-eight of Pilacy and Ryan.
I have that, okay.
Franklin.
Okay.
Do you, do you have it?
Yes, I got that one.
It says from front topic.
I'm gonna go in that order, I'm gonna, so what I'm asking you, I'm gonna go in that order, so the first one's twenty-twenty-eight, and then the second one is twenty-twenty-nine. Right? These are continuation. Then we got new business, okay, I got it. Okay, continuation of, of applicant for, from the meeting of, uh, July, what was it, July twenty-second. Uh, application number twenty-twenty-eight of Pilacy and Ryan, PC Franklin G. Pilacy for two variances from front yard property line setback for construction of a twenty-six by one foot by thirty-eight foot addition to an existing building to be located three point five feet from the front yard, from the front property line on Straight Turnpike, and a one point five foot from front property line on Main Street at thirteen hundred Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut, and a BG General Business Zoning District. Uh, who's here to represent the applicant?
Uh, Franklin Pilacy, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, uh, Franklin Pilacy on behalf of the applicant, and as we discussed at the last, uh, public hearing session, we talked about a state highway taking of a significant portion of this property in nineteen forty for highway purposes before the adoption of zoning in nineteen fifty-five, and that this factor is beyond the control of the property owner. The location of the front of the building has existed since prior to the adoption of zoning. The expansion area is no closer to the present front line, but does extend, uh, to Straits Turnpike. Now, since the last meeting, public hearing, the applicant has met with the assistant zoning officer, and we have, uh, adopted some of the recommendations from both the ZBA and the zoning officer. The size of the building has been reduced, uh, by three feet on the Straits Turnpike side, making the variance, uh, not that much less that, uh, is now requested. And again, related to all the safety issues and concerns, the building is designed with a concrete wall that's four feet high, uh, to meet all of the, uh, safety concerns, and in addition, there'll be some additional, uh, ballards, uh, put up that have been, uh, that were in place today during the sidewalk. So that's pretty much it, we did take into account all the safety concerns and the, uh, that were mentioned the last meeting, the design has changed. Zoning officer recommended a reduction in size, that has been done, so the, uh, application is amended to reduce the, the amount of the variance requested and to add the concrete, uh, wall. So I think that's all we have at this point.
Anyone from the board have any questions?
No, dear.
No questions?
So it's pretty, pretty obvious that they're taking some steps to, uh, ensure safety inside that building, I'd rather see a building around the people rather than a sidewalk sitting area, because that's, at least you have structure to protect them, you know, in case a car goes off track.
Correct. And also, um, Jeff and I talked at the meeting there that, um, you know, uh, to hear this, actually, we missed that last time, actually, to hear this, uh, application, there has, there should have been changes to it, because we already lis, we already listened to the same application, I, I know once for sure, so you do have to make changes in order to come before us again, which they did, they accommodated the changes, so, um, does anybody else have any questions? Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application, is anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, there is nobody from the public who wants to talk, but I just want to add a few more points to, to this application. Uh, after I reviewed the, I'm sorry, after I reviewed the site plan, I noticed that actually there's like three issues that are very unique to this property. Number one, as Attorney Pilacy mentioned, the taking of the land from this parcel that made it non-conforming, that is one reason for the hardship, and the number two is the shape of this property, it is very narrow on the north end and very wide on the south end, and that is something that is not under the control of the property owner, and that created a hardship too. And the more important one is the location of this lot and has three frontage on three streets. If this was a normal lot, only the north part toward Main Street was a frontage with twenty-five foot setback requirement. The other two sides were sidelines, which need only ten feet. This also created a hardship, and that is something that we are going to discuss with the planning and zoning commission when they are reviewing their regulations, to see like some other towns, if a property has more than one frontage on a public road, they only treat one side as a front and the other side they treat as side property line, which requires less setbacks. In this case, that is a hardship for the applicant because they have three frontage on three streets which require twenty-five feet setback from each side. If it was a sideline, they needed only ten feet. I think these three situations are very unique to this property and also cause that hardship for the applicant.
True, true, I was gonna, I was gonna say that after we, if we vote on this, um, after we vote to close this public hearing, you know, at, at the regular meeting when we vote, we would bring up, we'd bring that up too. Okay, so do I have, I have a, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, application number twenty-twenty-nine of Michael Zoller for a variance of eight feet to a side yard property line setback for construction of a nine foot by sixteen foot shed to replace an existing non-conforming shed to be located twelve feet from a side property line at forty-four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R seventy residential zoning district. Is someone here to represent the applicant?
I am Connor Zoller.
Okay.
Uh, I believe you did a sidewalk today, so you saw the situation that, um, was questioned last time. Um, I don't believe I need to cover any, uh, additional details, um, I was just happy to have you guys come out and see what was happening.
Okay, um, does anyone from the board have any questions, since we went out on that sidewalk, is there anything you'd like to add, or?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just, uh, I, I missed last meeting, and I just have a question on the application. Uh, when the, when the application was filled out, the, uh, name of the applicant is, is actually Michael, uh, and it says that the property owner is Connor, and then on the bottom of the sheet, uh, the applicant was signed, it was signed as Connor as the applicant instead of Michael, and then, and I think it's page eleven, uh, there's a, an affidavit that was signed that said that Michael is the owner of the property. So I, I just, I think we just need to make sure that our paperwork is clear, so we understand who is the true owner. It's, it's got both Michael and Connor as owners, if they are, that's fine, but it, it, it's not clear to me, uh, who's the owner and who's the applicant.
You, can you answer that?
They are brothers, and they are the record owner of this, this property.
That is accurate.
They're more brothers.
So, so they, they both own the property?
Yes.
Yeah, both of them can be applicant and owner.
That, that's fine, as, as long as it's clear in the office, that's fine, thank you.
Their names are on the deed, both of them.
Thank you, thank you.
For what?
Okay, on this one now, uh, his, your, your, his hardship was, uh, well inceptic was? I think that where he wanted to put the shed, he had nowhere else to put that shed, so I think we asked him to put it, we put, put it like right where it was, near the house, if I remember correctly.
They actually have an existing, they have an existing non-conforming shed.
Right.
If they wanted to replace with the same size, they didn't need a variance, they didn't have to even come to this store. Because they made it only one or two feet larger, and the shed got a little closer to the property line, that is why they are in front of you to get a variance for eight feet.
Okay. Alright, does anyone from the board have any other questions?
Nope.
Um, so should I go through, I'll say it once, does anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Hearing none, have a motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, new business, application twenty-twenty-eleven of John Nigre for a variance of point five one acre variance of a five point one, a five point one, point five one acre lot area required for a farm to raise horses on a four point four nine acre parcel on five sixty-seven Sunnyside Avenue, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R thirty residential zoning district. Is the applicant here?
Don Nygrun?
Don't you have to read the public, uh?
Yes.
There is, there is a legal process.
The zoning board of appeals of the town of Watertown, Connecticut, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, at seven PM as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following application. Application twenty-twenty-eleven of John Nygrun for a variance of point five one acre lot area required for a farm to raise horses on a four point four nine acre parcel at five sixty-seven Sunnyside Avenue, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R thirty residential zoning district. Section twelve point six point two of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum five acre land to house farm animals in any residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this thirteenth day of August, twenty twenty, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this twentieth day of August, twenty twenty, that red Dalton Secretary, zoning board.
Is there anyone here to represent the applicant?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, uh, my name is, my name is John Nygrun Junior, I'm the current owner, and I reside at five six seven Sunnyside Avenue in Oakville.
Okay. Can you?
Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, can you state your hardship?
Oh, okay. Yes, um, so the, I purchased the property almost a year and a half ago, um, the deed on the property is five acres. Um, back in the eighties, the town had taken, the state of Connecticut and the town took, um, a strip of land in the front of the property, um, to reinforce the road. Um, they put a barrier up, um, and they listed it as the, as a, um, a reinforcement in a hill for the road. Um, the previous owner had not a, didn't understand, he was very elderly, didn't know that it was taken away from it, so my hardship is that, um, I still mow the property, I maintain it, I weed whack it, I pick garbage off of it. It's still actually part of the property, but, um, it's taken away from my actual, uh, amount of acres needed to have my horses. I currently only have two horses, so I'm looking to be able to, if my horse has a baby, be able to have it here, so.
Okay. Um, which house is yours, is that that one that was brown on Sunnyside?
Yep, now it's blue.
Yeah, I wouldn't buy that. Huh? Okay, I thought it was the one across the street, because the one across the street already had horses.
Yeah, and, um, she's in, she's in a meeting along with a couple of my other neighbors who, um, are also, um, in favor of me having it as well. Um, but she also has more than five acres, so, um, I'm just looking for the variance to, um, give me the farm status, that's all.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Is there any, any houses behind the property?
No, there's, uh, almost thirty acres behind me that's completely wooded.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and I have over five hundred feet of road frontage, so, um.
I'm familiar with, with your house, I go by it quite often.
Oh, okay.
Could that land behind you be developed?
Um, it was, it was attempted several years ago, um, but the, um, access road does not allow it to be, there's only fourteen feet to get to the access to the back of it, unless they went through Waterberry, which is coming up the hill, it's off of Berkshire Drive, so.
Any other questions?
Our zoning allows farm at five acres?
Yes.
You need minimum five acres to be a farm and also to keep farm animals on your property.
Is there a limit to how many horses and animals you can have on five acres?
One per acre.
There is no limit, the zoning regulation doesn't specify that how many animals we can have, but the requirement is that five acres, that is the key to be a farm.
Did that change?
Yeah, I know.
I thought it used to be five acres for one horse, and then one acre per horse after that.
It doesn't say that, it says that you need five acres of land in order to become a farm.
Yes, I asked, did it change?
Uh, since I'm here, no, if it was before me, I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, can I, can I just say that, that, the, I'm, again, the land wasn't cut off or sold or anything, and we still maintain it every week, we mow it and weed whack it, so it's still a five acre piece, except the town, um, owns that front strip, again, which we maintain and everything, so.
Okay, Musa, did you go out and look at this?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get a chance, I thought maybe the, the commission is, the, the board is interested to go and see this.
Sure, we could, you guys wanna go look at it? Sure. What do you think, you wanna go? Okay.
Could we go later than five o'clock, like five-thirty?
We went today at five.
I know, I don't get back into town till after five.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing wrong, thirty, should be okay.
Yeah.
Your next meeting is on September twenty-third, if you want to, to go and see, I can schedule a sidewalk for five-thirty.
Okay. Alright, that sounds good. Do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
You need a motion to continue public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Motion to continue public hearing, twenty-twenty-eleven.
Second.
And also, as well as sidewalk for September twenty-three at five-thirty PM.
Musa, is that the day of our meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yes.
A sec.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next application, is application number twenty-twenty-dash-twelve of Richard Mukish for a variance of thirty feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a twelve by ten shed to be located twenty feet from a front property line street on, uh, Litchfield Road at twenty-four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R seventy residential zoning district. I'll have the secretary read the legal notice.
The zoning board of appeals of the town of Watertown, Connecticut, will hold public hearing on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, at seven PM as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following mech, application. Application twenty-twenty-dash-twelve of Ri, Richard Mickish for a variance of thirty feet to front yard property line setback for construction of a twelve foot by ten foot shed to be located twenty feet from the front property line street line of Litchfield Road at twenty-four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R seventy residential zoning district. Section twelve point eight of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum fifty foot setback from the property line for an accessory structure in an R seventy residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this thirteenth day of August, twenty twenty, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this twentieth day of August, twenty twenty, Redmond Dalton, Secretary, zoning board of appeals.
Is there anyone here to represent the applicant?
Do you have, Mr. or Mrs. Mukish?
Hello?
Mr. Chairman, there is nobody to represent the application now.
Well, do I have a motion to, what do we do?
Table.
We'll table it?
You can just, can.
Continue.
You can, it's a public hearing next month, yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to table it until next month?
Continue it till next month, make a motion to continue, application twenty-twenty-dash-twelve of Richard Mickish, twenty-four Ledgewood Road, till our next meeting.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next application is application number twenty-twenty-dash-one of Franklin Pilacy for location approval for a Kia Blazy that dealership at six sixty-nine Straight Turnpike, Watertown, Connecticut. Watertown, Connecticut, in a B S, B dash S C Shopping Center Business Zoning District. I have the secretary read the legal notice.
Zoning Board of Appeals of Town of Watertown, Connecticut will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August twenty six twenty twenty at seven P M. as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following application. Apple, motor vehicle application twenty twenty dash one of Franklin Pilacy for location approval for a new and used car dealership and repairer for Kia Blazier's dealership at six six nine Straits Turnpike, Watertown, Connecticut, in a B S C Shopping Center Business Zoning District. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file, planning and zoning office Watertown Municipal Center. Sixty one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this thirteenth day of August twenty twenty. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this twentieth day of August twenty twenty. Edward Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Franklin, are you there?
I am. Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Franklin Pilacy and Jason Rodbikus of uh, Blazier's uh, Kia is present. And this, as you know, is not a, a variance or a hardship situation. It's an approval of location uh, where you act as an agent of the state of Connecticut. Uh, and uh, this is uh, on Straits Turnpike uh, near the other car dealerships, but it's a, it's new for a car dealership use. It's the old highlight manufacturing. And it's next to the new, uh, it's next to the BMW dealership. And this site, this site has already been vetted uh, vis a vis uh, a dealership uh, in that, uh, on May sixth, two thousand twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a site plan and a special permit, and all the vetting was done with respect to, again, the site plan and the, and the, the actual location and suitability. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, in order to apply for a motor vehicle dealer license for this location, the uh, Zoning Board of Appeals is required to approve the location. Uh, it's, it's uh, kind of a confusing situation, because the statute that set forth the standards that to be considered was actually repealed by the legislature, but a later court decision indicates that maybe that statute uh, still exists, notwithstanding that you can't find it uh, in the statutes anymore. And the old suitability standards basically uh, stated uh, approval of location for a dealership taking into account the proximity to uh, schools and intersections and public buildings and things of that nature. And this location is a little bit uh, favorable in the sense that there are no uh, intersections near, near it, and there are no schools uh, near it. There are no public buildings near it. Uh, but what is near it is a, a, a number of other uh, dealerships that uh, obviously uh, are suitable. So uh, we're prepared to a- answer any questions, but again, the uh, site plan and special permit have been approved, and this is the last step in obtaining the dealership uh, license. So if there are any questions, uh, uh, Jason is here, I'm here, prepared to answer any.
Does anyone from the board have any questions with the applicant?
Is this going to interfere with the housing above it? The apartments above it? How are you going to screen it?
That was all. That's all taken care of in the uh, site plan special permit. There's a landscaping plan that was approved and it was actually uh, changed in, in a couple of respects at the request of the uh, new, new uh, facility to the rear. So they, they were on board with the present site plan.
Okay, thank you.
And also it is a, it is a permitted use in a B S C Shopping Center Zoning District. It's a permitted use.
Anyone else from the board have any questions? Musa, you went and looked at this? Musa? Wow. You went and looked at this? Okay.
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I've also looked at it.
Since Planning and Zoning Commission already approved the site plan and a special permit for that.
So we're.
They reviewed the parking spaces and all the details. For you, it is just a decision that is this site suitable for car dealership or not? This is located next to other car dealership. I think it is suitable.
This is actually what we discussed a few, a few meetings ago that, that this is probably the right way of doing it. Let planning and zoning groups roll the thing, and then if it gets approved, then you come to us for our approval. Okay, anybody else have any questions? I hearing none. Do I have a motion to close?
Anybody from the public?
Is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motor vehicle application number twenty twenty dash two for a certificate of location for approval for Tire Associates LLC.
There is one other item, acceptance of minutes.
I, I don't see that.
It's about a month.
Yes.
Bottom line says reports from committees and a German.
No, look at page two.
Oh, I see what you're, oh yeah, this is okay. I got you. All right. The next, the next thing on the agenda is acceptance of minutes for regular meeting July twenty second. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This thing is all over the place.
How will you go to old business?
Yeah, I got it. Okay. Just that, now I, now I lost it.
So old business, we have to review the Zoning Board of Appeals bylaws? That's item one.
Oh, but we, we had that tire, that, we had that tire thing was next.
That's, no. That's not next.
That's under new business, Rick. That's farther down.
Right.
We have, we have to talk about this agenda. We, we need to go back to our old style.
We gotta go back to the regular way, because this is a mess. This really is a mess. My, my stuff that I printed out didn't even, I don't even have everything. Okay, so now we're under new business?
Old, old business, Rick.
Old business.
Good luck. All right, you gotta give me a minute here. Okay, old business. I only have, I, I have the things that we went through on old business. We already did them. I don't have anything else.
Oh, review of the Zoning Board of Appeals bylaw. That should be item number one under old business.
Okay, right, I got it. Okay.
Okay.
Review of the Zoning Board of Appeals bylaws. You guys want to do that?
You have the bylaws for a few months to review. I don't know if you get a chance to review them. Are you proposing any changes to your bylaws, or you want to approve it the way it is?
What do you guys want to do?
I, I'd like to get another copy. I, you know, it's been a while since I've had a chance to review these and um, if we can get a new copy in a packet, Musa, that would, that would help out.
Okay, very good. I will send it to you before the next.
Yeah, because I, I think, I, I'll just say personally, I'm, the, the, the way this agenda is coming out, to me, is confusing uh, compared to how we used to do it, and we may, we may want to put some specificity in the bylaws to outline how we want the agenda to, to be uh, uh, put out to us. I also think we ought to, uh, now that we, we were in this uh, pandemic and this virtual type of meeting stuff, we may want to put some language in on how we get our information. I, I struggle a bit with uh, reading all the information online. I, I have papers all over here with notes and, and all that stuff. I, I, I personally would like to get a full packet that I could have for the meeting, and I think it would go better, and we, we may need to add some of that specificity in our, in our bylaws, and we may want to add it there.
I would also like to add that each one of these applications doesn't have a, a time limit on how long we have. We know we have thirty-five days, we know we have sixty days. Usually each applicant below, it would say how long we have for this before, you know, we need uh, we need a permission from the applicant to either extend or not extend, which is not on here either. So I, I don't know, this is, this is not a very good way of running a meeting. For us, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, this is a format, this is a format that the Planning and Zoning Agenda, Commission's Agenda looked like. And my supervisor wanted to have all the agendas to be the same, but if you wanted to go back to the way it was, it shouldn't be a problem. I will change it back to the way it was before.
Well, that's a week, how, how do you guys, how do you guys feel? I was going to wait until the end before we adjourn, but now that you jumped in, Jeff.
No, I, no, I, 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 this, it's our, it's our commission, and we shouldn't have another commission driving, you know, our needs, if that's the right way to say it, so. Um, I, I would like to go back to the other way that we have it, and, and if we have to put it in our Zoning Board of Appeals bylaws, then that's probably the place to put it.
Right. Does anyone else have anything they want to add to that?
I'd like to, um, excuse me, I would like to get a regular packet instead of having to look at it online and print out what I need. I spend most of the time printing.
Right. How was that? Does anyone else feel the same, or?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we, we actually got some complaints.
I was actually going to bring this up at the end, but it is kind of confusing now. Now, look at the time we're wasting. We could have been, you know, I mean, if we had people out there, engineers and what, what so forth, we'd be over here trying to figure out where we are. Okay, so actually, where are we?
So I, I like, I like. I'd like to make a motion to table the review of the Board of, the Board of Appeals bylaws.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
You can't.
Can I?
No.
Oh, I can't, sorry.
I'll second it.
Go ahead, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next one is application number twenty. We're in the regular meeting now? Is this where we are?
Still in old business.
Old business.
Okay.
Regular meeting, old business.
So we have application. Item number two is application twenty twenty dash eight of Pilacy and Ryan P C Franklin, Chief Pilacy for two variances from the front property line setback for construction of a twenty-six point one foot X by thirty-eight foot addition to an existing building to be located three point five feet from a front property line on Straits Turnpike and a one point five foot from front property line on Main Street at thirteen hundred Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut, BG General Business Zoning District. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion, in case if you want to make, approve it, it should be, uh, the shot is twenty-three by thirty-eight. It is not the one that was on the agenda.
That's right.
Not after the last, they reduced the size. Now, it is an addition that twenty-three by thirty-eight is free.
Okay, so the new addition, because he reduced it, is going to be twenty-three by thirty-six, did you say, or thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Okay, so the new one is twenty-three by, by thirty-eight. Okay, do we have a motion?
I, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All right, we went out there and looked at this, and his hot, set, his hardship is uh, state taking most of his property, and uh, for safety reasons, even, you know, I mean, who knows for, before we have another virus like this, but in order for his people to, to uh, get, take out, and you, you need a closed-in area. We got the winter coming up, and um, he has, he has a hardship of the, uh, the state taking his property, and we, and he went along with what we suggested on putting uh, a foundation, a four-foot foundation to protect uh, the people in the building and protect the building from the, from the road. He also placed the ballers there, so um, pretty much did what we wanted him to do. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Application number twenty twenty dash nine of Michael Zoller for a variance of eight feet to a side yard property line setback for construction of a nine foot by sixteen foot shed to replace an existing non-performing shed to be located twelve feet from a side property line at forty-four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R seventy residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Then I'll second.
Okay, uh, here, we went out there tonight too and looked at that, and I guess he uh, went with our recommendation on keeping the shed close by the house, and there was an existing shed there, so um, there's a motion and a second. Everyone is, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, new business. Application number twenty twenty dash eleven of John Nate Near, Near Green for a variance of zero point five one acre lot after required area required for a farm to raise horses on a four point forty-nine acre parcel at five sixty-seven Sunnyside Avenue, Oakville, Connecticut, and an R thirty residential zoning. We have uh, voted to uh, go take a sidewalk to, to continue this uh, application until next month and do a sidewalk and go visit this property ourselves, so um, is everyone in favor with that?
A motion to table?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, application number twenty twenty dash twelve of Richard Mickish for a variance of thirty feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a twelve foot by ten foot shed to be located twenty feet from the front yard property line of Litchfield Road at twenty-four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R seventy residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to table.
A second.
Hey, all in favor?
Right.
Aye. Okay. Now you guys have got to help me, yeah. Where the, oh boy.
Page three now.
I don't have a page three. That's the thing, I don't, I don't have any numbers on my pages.
No, it's under the heading, Rick. The pages are right under the heading.
All mine, all mine say page two. Everything.
There's two page twos.
Hold on, yep, I got it. I'm sorry.
There's no page one, there's two page twos and a page three.
I see that. Where's Roseanne when you need her? Oh. Okay. Number three. Motor vehicle, twenty twenty dash one of Franklin Pilacy for a location approval for a Kia Blazer dealership at six sixty-nine Straits Turnpike, Watertown, Connecticut, in a B S C Shopping Center Business Zoning District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, number four, item four, motor vehicle application twenty twenty dash two for a certi- certi- certificate of location approval for Tire Associates LLC at eight thirty-eight Main Street, Oakville, Connecticut, in a BG dash one General Business Zoning District. Do I have a motion?
Who?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant should present their case before you make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I thought we just had to prove it. Okay, is anyone here to represent the applicant?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, this is Bill Chavat Tire Associates.
Okay.
Who's this?
Uh, Bill Chavat Tire Associates.
Your address?
Did you state your address, please?
Thirty-three Pinewood Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, O three two. Building address is eight three eight Main Street, Oakville, Connecticut.
Now, is this the, is this the original Economy Tire?
Yeah, it's just a name change in ownership for St. Andrews.
Okay.
And we're just uh, filing for a repair's license, so we just need a signature for the K seven form with the D M P.
So, so there's no difference in service, there's no difference in business operations. It's essentially a name change or a name ownership instead of Zeller Tire, Tire Associates.
You know, it really wouldn't matter. It wouldn't have any bearing on us. We don't, that wouldn't help us either way.
No. It's already an existing business too, but good question, Jeff. Okay. Guys have any questions for the applicant?
Being existing, I think it's fine.
Hot and dry. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, communications and bills, not, Connecticut Federation Planning and Zoning Agency's quarterly newsletter, summer 2020 volume number 25. Four.
Four.
Three. Now, go ahead, Gary, you can state, you haven't got your.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't received a copy of that in the last two quarters, and I really would like to get a hard copy of it. I find it very helpful through our, you know, our business.
Hey, Musa, can you?
I'll make sure that you get a hard copy next time. Anyway, the commission wants to have a packet, then we will include everything in the packet for you.
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay, now, the next item is reports from committees.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I just want to recommend, there is one article on this paper that you should read. It says regarding the planning and zoning can sue the zoning board of appeal if they are not agree with one of your variances that you grant. Because they believe that every time you grant a variance, you are actually violating their zoning regulation. I just want you to read that. And if you remember, in the past, we had a case that in one time, planning and zoning commission took the zoning board of appeals to court. And at that time, they were not successful, they lost. The DBA won. And I just want you to read that article, it's interesting to know.
Okay, we will. So do I have a motion to file the Connecticut Federation Planning and Zoning Agency quarter newsletter?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now is when I wanted to bring during reports for committees. Now, should we bring that up about that we want our packets? Want to discuss that?
It says, if it's your board and anything that you want, follow your own bylaws and whatever you want, just let me know, I will talk to my supervisor.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like perhaps discuss more whether we can go back to live meetings next month.
Good point. Can you find out, Musa, if we can go back to live meetings?
There's an in-person meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the planning and zoning commission, they wanted to have their first in-person meeting this month. And I will check with the town to make sure that we are not doing anything against the town policy. But if that commission can do, probably you will be able to do it too.
I would be in favor of that myself.
Okay, so we have two things.
I will talk to the town manager and to my supervisor and let them know that the board wants to have their meetings in person in future.
Okay, but the main thing that we want is we all are in agreement that we want our packets like the way we used to have them, with all the information that we used to get. So should I put that in a form of a motion?
No, you can just recommend to me, and I will follow that, and I will prepare a packet for you and send it to you next month.
Okay.
If you're waiting for me to do that, I'm your staff, and I will do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
We also like to go back to the old format of our agendas that could track the times, you know, that the applicant's in front of us as well as the format.
Right.
Okay. We will follow.
Well, exactly the way it used to be.
And Musa, understand that I don't think that we object for changes. We just want to be a part of whatever changes, don't just make changes and sort of force on us. We're open to discussions and we'd be happy to listen, but we'd like to be part of the change, not be changed upon.
Actually, if you look at your bylaws, article five, article 10, it tells you that the order of business for regular meeting. And it has listed here that you have to have the roll card first and then action on minutes, old business, new business, communications and bills, reports from commission, maybe adjournment. That's the order of the business in your bylaws. And in the past, I was following, and I will say, I can go back to that, and it shouldn't be a problem.
Also, Musa, I've always found it odd that we've had the zoning board make zoning regulations that would tell the zoning board of appeals how to do business. And we have them still in our regulations, and no one on this board had ever heard anything about them, and they got passed. I just can't get over that still, and this was only done about five years ago, six years ago.
That goes back to, that goes back to when they do the comprehensive plan. They should include all land use boards, wetlands, zoning board of appeals, and themselves. We should all be a part of that, so we could say, you know what? If you put this in there, this means people got to come before the zoning board of appeals. Or maybe you should admit, you know, I mean, like, we straightened this out now. Now we got, tonight, we got, first time, we got a dealership that came and went to the planning and zoning commission first, which we asked, what was, about three months ago, we asked for that? So that this way here, no sense in us approving something, and planning and zoning is not going to approve it. So they approved the site plan, we just approved the location. So they did that part right, which is what we want. But I'm with you, Gary, I mean, I think we should be a part of, you know, have a special meeting, or, you know.
We'll do our bylaws next month.
Right.
By the way, relative to. You have a lot on the agenda, 25 people, and that's a violation of the current COVID.
Right.
Requirements.
Right. So we're probably gonna have to. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just for your information, the applicant that you tabled his application for next month, now he is joining the meeting. Is that okay with you to go back to the agenda and then open the public hearing, or?
I think you've got to wait until next month.
Yeah, we already did it, we're right to adjournment.
Okay.
Yeah, have him come back next month. I mean, it's easier for one person to show up than all of us, you know, we're all here, we went through the meeting, and we're at the end of the meeting, if we were in between, I would say yes, but.
Plus, if there's any public, public may have left.
Yeah, also.
Okay. Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay.
Musa. The, the, the planning and zoning are trying to get together and have an in-person meeting, I guess, that we said before?
You can have a joint meeting with other land use commissions.
No, no, what I'm talking about, planning and zoning commission is trying to get together and have an in-person meeting, correct?
Yes.
So there may be, and I don't know this to be a fact, COVID requirements is an executive order issued by the governor that only allows so many people to meet. So if we have a large agenda, as planning and zoning may have a large agenda, and there's a lot of people in that room, there may be an issue with the number of people allowed indoors. And I think it's 25, by the way.
Yeah. That could be a problem.
Large room, and they can keep that text-free distance, the social distancing, and also keep the number of people to 25 in one time. Maybe like one application, when they present their case, when the public who are interested with that application, they can enter the room. Once they are done, they can leave, and then the next application comes. I mean, they are going to control the number of people in the room at one time.
I think we can make it work.
They'll also check their temperature before anybody who wants to go into the meeting.
Who's doing that? I vote for Gary Swingle to do it, that's it.
How are you going to space out the table where we sit?
We will see, I mean, next week they have a meeting, we will see how it goes. And then based on that experience, we will see what we can do.
Are the meetings going to be in a new center, or are they going to be at the Watertown High School still?
Oh, at the new town hall.
So they'll be in the new town hall center?
Yes.
If, if, that all sounds good, if that applicant is still there, do we want to hear his thing just in case there's changes he might need, so he comes back, we don't send him off for another month?
No, because we just said there may be somebody who's.
Right, but not the public hearing, we might just hear, if we hear something that's a problem that is going to make this get tabled again, he was on earlier, we couldn't hear it. He was in the meeting, we just, you couldn't hear him talk.
Who?
The Mickus.
He wasn't there.
Yes, he was. He was muted for some reason, but I just don't want to see him get put off another month with this question, not do the public hearing part, because that's not fair either.
I don't control that who is talking and who is entering the meeting. Our IT is here, and Frank is looking every person who wants to enter the meeting, and he allows them to do that. Even the public, if somebody wants to talk from the public, we can see that who wants to join the meeting.
No, I'm saying, you just said he's in, they came on the meeting just now, and they wanted to talk.
Yeah, he just came.
Correct, that's fine. Should we just let him say his thing? He's going to have to say it again next month, but if we hear something this month that he could change, we won't have to table it for another month.
Well, quite frankly, I've had enough today, I've been going since five o'clock, so I'm done.
I've been since three, so.
It's up to the chairman, it's up to the chairman what he wants to do.
We're at the end of the meeting, like I said, if he was here, if he was here at the beginning, you know, when we were doing these things, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but we're at the end of the meeting, it's what time is it?
I make a motion to close the regular meeting.
Go ahead, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
See you next month.
Have a good night.
You too.